Go ahead, Tony.
I just had something pop up here. This meeting is being recorded, leave meeting or continue. I gotta click continue. That's new. That's new. You gotta consent to be recorded. Okay, Nate. Is Donna here? Nadine's iPad. Is that you, Donna?
No. Oh, Tony.
What's going on? Well, whatever. We're gonna start.
We're looking for Mr. Gogoski, Tony. Is he here?
Well, let me open the meeting. This virtual meeting of the City of Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. It is 6:04 PM. My name is Tony Arkalevich and I will be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the City of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. The other board members are. Brian Cafferty is here. Mary Newbauer is here. Is Donna with us yet?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, Donna. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
No problem. Donna Martin. So we have Brian Cafferty, Donna Martin, Mary Newbauer, and myself. So we have four members and it's more than a quorum. There will be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members, and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. Okay, first order of business, approve the minutes for 5:13 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
I make a motion.
Who's that, Donna?
Yep, I.
Okay, second. Second. Have a second, please.
Second, I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, aye. Opposed. Four oh passes. Okay, we now will start with our first agenda item. I'm assuming Mr. Gogoski is here. Gogoski, are you here, Mr. Gogoski?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, you're on Nadine's iPad. You're Nadine iPad.
Yeah, I couldn't do it. I couldn't bring it up in my house for some reason.
Okay, well, you're here. Okay, this is New 52 German Street. I think SBL 56.42-15-9, Ward 8, Zone R2. Owner applicant Alan Gogoski. This applicant is seeking a use variance from 405-19 of the City of Kingston zoning code to construct a single storage shed on a vacant parcel of land at 52 German Street that abuts his current residence at 51 Ravine Street. I had an opportunity to visit the site. I meet Mr. Gogoski, happened to be out. I have your application. There's some excellent photos attached to the application of the area behind Mr. Gogoski's house that the shed is going to go. It's a 12 by 18 foot shed. Is that correct, Mr. Gogoski?
Yes, it is, brother.
Okay. Now, this is an interesting situation because you live at 51 Ravine Street and right behind 51 Ravine Street is a vacant lot that used to have a house on it, but it does not any longer, so it actually is 52 German Street and it's where a house used to be. So can you tell us a little bit about what the storage shed is gonna be for, Mr. Gogoski?
Yes, I have a bunch of tools. I have a piece of property also down on the Bell Street where my shop is and I'm in the process that's for sale. So I need a place to store all my tools.
Okay, so it's gonna be tools.
Tool shed, yeah. A little, probably a little hammer and a saw there because all the power tools have the batteries.
Now, I noticed that you use that area for parking, so you won't be using it for parking. There won't be as many spaces?
Yes and no. There's still gonna be two spaces.
Okay.
Where the flower pot is. That's 20 foot on each side, so I had the flower pot there that divides the parking lot, so two cars can park on either side of that flower pot.
And you meet all the current required setbacks, Eric? You checked on that, all the current?
Yes.
Mr. Gogoski, the where it has to be, yes, it did setbacks.
Okay, so we don't need any variances on the setbacks. Okay, board, do you have any questions for Mr. Gogoski?
Okay, so there's not gonna be any electric there. It's just gonna be storage, correct?
Correct, my dear.
Chairman, I just want you to remind Mr. Gogoski about the, if he's spoken to planning board yet.
That'll be in the motion. Thank you, though. We need, we need a couple, couple requirements that we're gonna go over in the motion. So. Is there any public comment on this application? Okay, any board members, any further questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Go ahead. All right. Donna? No, Donna.
I'm looking at the picture on the first page of the colored pictures and the second photograph shows a house with a fence. So is that paved area and the grassy lot, is that where the shed's going?
It, Mr. Gogoski?
Yeah, I don't have that photograph with me right now because I had run over my neighbors on Zoom, but if you're looking at the parking lot where you see the fence where it says Gogoski, is that what you're looking at, my dear?
Yes, and then it's the house next to the parking lot. It's not your.
No, no, there's one on the left and one on the right, so I don't know which house you're referring to.
You're, you're on the left side looking at the spot where the parking is.
Right, okay.
Where the parking is, is where the shed's gonna be, right, Mr. Gogoski?
Well, the shed's gonna be roughly half of the park on the left side.
It's gonna be in that, it's gonna be in that area.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Someone else have a question, board? Mary?
No.
Ryan, did you have a question?
I did. So, um, this is a vacant lot that's contiguous with his property?
Yes, yes, behind us.
Okay. Some, I'm curious, what, why is this a use variance?
Because it's, it's not a use of right on that, in that particular zoning code.
Can't put a storage?
No, it's not a use, it's not a use by right, right, Eric?
Situation is, it's a, it's a separate vacant parcel. Ryan, so technically accessory structures are not allowed on vacant parcels of land according to the code.
Okay.
And he owns this vacant piece of parcel which is contiguous to his parcel, abuts his parcel. And so he's going for his variance, of course, to put accessory structure on a vacant piece of land.
Okay, and just a question. You know, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have to do this if he just, if he just merged the two lots and.
That's correct, and you can ask Mr. Gogoski about that. I spoke to him.
And, and Mr. Gogoski, what, what, what was the reason for not just merging the two lots?
Well, I always tell that it's very expensive, but at times they have everything surveyed and this and crossing, it's very expensive, so I'm going this route first.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board? If not, I ask for a motion, motion to approve a use variance from Section 405-19 to construct a single story storage shed on a vacant parcel of land pending issuance of a building permit, planning board approval, and referral to Kingston Landmark Preservation Commission. Mr. Gogoski, were you aware of all those requirements? Did you review them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion, please.
A motion.
Mary, a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Approved four zero. Mr. Gogoski, you got your storage shed. Good luck with your endeavor.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank everybody for their time. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a pleasure meeting you that day. I hope you're feeling better, by the way.
Yeah, now, now I got a, a blood clot. So yes, one thing or another, brother.
All right, well, you'll, you'll get there.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, do we have our next applicant? Are they here?
I'm Victoria Polidoro from Rodenhagen Shaw Polidoro.
Last time I saw you, we saw you in person, I remember, right?
I know.
We're on the screen, so how are you doing?
You know, I have to admit, I'm really loving the Zoom meetings. It's nice to be home while it's still light out, but.
There's pluses and minuses. If the computer's not working, it's not such a good thing, but when you go to sign on. But anyway, yeah, let me read what we have here. We have owner applicant 323 Wall Street LLC, Victoria Polidoro, attorney, 323 Wall Street, Zone C2, Ward 2, SBL 48.331-1-13. The applicant is seeking an appeal of the zoning enforcement officer, Eric Kitchen's determination in reference to 405-36 of the City of Kingston zoning code, which deals with temporary signs. Ms. Polidoro, the board has all received, has received your letter and I'm sure everyone has read it. And it's very thorough, to the point, concise letter. And we're going to discuss it and ask you some questions. You can ask some questions. And.
Could I, could I do a quick summary for anyone that?
I was just gonna tell you, the letter is dated May 3, 2021. It's regarding the appeal of the zoning enforcement officer determination. And I asked Ms. Polidoro to give us a synopsis of your argument, your legal argument, please.
Okay, thank you. So again, I'm Victoria Polidoro from Rodenhagen Shaw Polidoro. I'm here with Patrick Logan. I'm gonna be helping with the presentation. We're gonna keep it short, though. Um, for those of you that don't.
Like short.
We're gonna keep it to the point. Wall Street Music Hall is located at 323 Wall Street. It is a pop-up event venue and they recently held an event in honor or in recognition of two local community organizations. A Wall Street Music Hall seeks to be an engaged member of the community. And before that event, we actively sought all necessary approvals for that special event. There was a newspaper article that came out. It did have some inaccurate information. And so I just wanna start the conversation by saying that there was no attempt here to be flagrant or to violate anything. You know, we spent a lot of time putting together the special event application and the noise permit and all of those things. So we're here tonight, though, specifically with respect to a notice of violation that was issued sometime in April and it was taped to 323 Wall Street. So Patrick's gonna share on his screen a copy of that stop work order, just so you can all see. And, you know, it's lacking very basic information such as a date and more importantly, it doesn't indicate any section of the zoning law that's being violated, nor does it indicate which signs are allegedly illegal. It simply said, remove illegal signs. Oh, we're still not able to share.
I'm trying, but.
Oh.
We, we, we received it in the, in your packet, copy of the notice, okay?
All right, well, it's more dramatic if I can put it up on the screen, but.
More dramatic. You're gonna take the whole screen up, right?
Yeah, yeah, there we go.
We, we.
Show you up.
You're sharing your screen now, you know.
You're gonna, you're gonna get things really going.
That's okay.
Let's not mess with success.
Last page of her notice, it actually is on there.
You all have a copy, but.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it doesn't include the basic information which is required in order to have a notice of violation. So for instance, your own city code requires that it, that it identify that a violation of a provision exists and provide a time to rectify. And this notice did neither of those things. In fact, when it was received by a representative of the owner, they went ahead and they took down some posters in the window thinking that this had to do with window posters or window signs. So it, it was confusing and, you know, on its face, it's just not sufficient. And, you know, this is with no offense to anyone in the building department. I know how hard everyone works. I know we're all overworked. It's just as a matter of due process, this particular notice does not satisfy it.
Exactly.
Point taken.
So I just wanna point out that this is not the first time this has happened in the city. We came across a case, Allen versus Pisecki, and we can provide Mr. Gartenstein with the sites. But in that case, the Supreme Court determined that a notice of violation to remove trees was insufficient because it did not provide sufficient detail on the trees to be removed. It simply said, you know, remove trees, very similar to saying remove illegal signs. In that case, it had vague directives and the court said it's just not enough to be upheld. So that's, that's why we think it's not sufficient on its face, but even if you do think it's sufficient, um, oh, Patrick's not gonna be able to show his pictures.
Do you want me to, I should make Patrick a co-host, right?
Oh, yeah, if you do that, then he can share. Thank you, Mr. Kitchen.
Eric, I'm really concerned that we're gonna just, you know, getting too, too involved here and we're gonna lose the whole meeting. I really.
We're.
Like to proceed.
Co-host, it'll work. Are you co-host now?
Wow.
Okay, so, so Patrick's now gonna take the reins and just quickly go through, you know, why he believes the code allows temporary signs without full site plan applications. And I'm gonna mute so there's no reverb.
Hello, everyone. Can you see my screens?
Your reverb rate in there. You got an echo going.
Hello, everyone. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Your screen, yes.
Oh, boy.
Okay, I'm really, I wanna go back.
Yeah, let me put yours on.
I wanna go back to the original format. I, I really don't wanna have to have the meeting tomorrow.
What?
All right, let's, let's get back to our original format, please, Eric. As the chair, I'm directing that I go back if.
I'm working on it, Tony.
Anyone is, is out of sync with that, I'm sorry, but I want, I want this meeting to proceed. Please go back to the original screen.
I heard you, Tony. Sometimes it takes a second. I'm learning.
Okay, no, I am not blaming you. I am just saying that.
I heard you, though. I mean, I have no air conditioner down here and it's like 90 degrees and I'm sorry.
Fine, you're doing a great job. We're gonna do it this way. Whatever we need to say or think or contemplate, we can do it on the screen. Okay, please proceed, Mr. Logan.
Mr. Chair, I believe we had actually just resolved that matter. This is the stop work order and.
I, I thought we were gonna do that.
Well, I, I just wanted to, all right, I see my screen has been removed. I, I wanted to just make a note of the city's past precedent regarding the need for permits for temporary signs. On Monday earlier this week, I took a quick walk around City Hall and a walk around the Stockade District near 323 Wall Street. More or less across the street from City Hall, there's the American Legion. That appears to have a temporary sign celebrating its 100 year anniversary in 2019. Just down the road on Broadway, there's the YMCA that has a similar temporary sign, wall mounted, which is discussing summer activities. Then within the Stockade District, within blocks of 323 Wall Street, signs for Memorial Day rally, signs indicating, sorry, sorry, that people are hiring. There's the Rusk Walden Harper Modiscello sign. They're also celebrating a, I believe, 150 year anniversary. And then there's the ice cream shop. That's actually next to 323 Wall Street. That seems to have temporary signs much like ours. Vinyl hanging on the building, which are discussing its ice cream delivery services, I imagine during the summer because of COVID. Now, it appears that none of these signs required a permit. And the reason we know this is because we submitted a FOIL, FOIL request to the city for any temporary sign applications over the last three years. We only received one application in response. It was for a freestanding sign on Schwenck Drive. And nothing for any of these other signs. Now, it appears that this is based on an established interpretation and application of the city's law regarding these temporary signs. And we believe the distinguishing factor between these signs and the one sign that did actually submit a permit is that that sign was freestanding. We believe under Section 405 36L of the zoning law that temporary signs which are wall mounted and which are being posted as part of a business event or special announcement are accept, accepted from any permitting requirement under the zoning law. Now, even if the board interprets the law a different way, we believe that this is a reasonable interpretation of the laws. It says, all temporary signs are prohibited except for these. We believe that that means that those signs are permitted as a right. You don't need to get a permit for those. And it makes sense because some of those other signs are contractor signs or signs issued by nonprofits. Now, if there is a disagreement about the interpretation, the ZDA is obligated to apply the least restrictive interpretation. This makes sense because it allows property owners and residents to be able to rely on a reasonable interpretation of the code and not be worried that they're going to be unexpected or restrictive interpretations of the code in the future. Now, finally, I wanna note that our tenants, Wall Street Music Hall, have actually now seen the signs in place and are thinking that they might want them to be there permanently. And we are in the process of putting together applications that are going to be going to the planning board, the Heritage Area Commission, and the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission. And.
This is a music hall. I wanna say that's music to my ears that you're starting that process of permanent signs.
I'm glad.
The pun intended there, was intended.
But the one thing I've asked the board to reflect upon with this process that we've started is that it's having us go to multiple submit, what is actually going to end up being, we believe, several thousand dollars worth of application fees in escrow, all for what would have been a temporary event sign. And we think it's going to take several months to just get these approvals. And this is all, again, for signs that were originally just meant to inform the public about a reopening and a temporary event. We don't believe that the code was ever supposed to require permits for these kinds of signs because it would simply be cost prohibitive to small businesses, to nonprofits, and to contractors, as I mentioned earlier. And with that, I will cede the floor back to you. I apologize for the technical difficulties.
Well, I didn't, I didn't wanna lose you, so I just soon, just do it the old fashioned way, but I do wanna, I do wanna clarify a couple things because I heard you mention a couple times permits. And like I said, music to my ears, you do plan on getting permanent signs and you're gonna start the process. But I think you outlined pretty much what it is, but we just need some clarification on some things and I need some from Eric. So at this point, unless you have something further, I wanna ask Eric a couple questions and then we'll open it up to ask you, Ms. Polidoro, and you, Mr. Logan, some questions and you may ask some questions of us if you'd like. So with that being said, the board may have some questions. After, I wanna establish a couple things. Okay, Eric, are you ready there?
Yes.
All right, you all cooled down now from the air conditioning?
It's broken, so we're not cooled down.
What are you gonna do? So Eric, I have a couple questions for you, just to get the fact pattern here on, on record and we'll move from there. After the notice was given, did anyone, owner, attorney, manager, et cetera, call you about what the notice was for?
Yes, Mrs. Polidoro had contacted my office. And I tried to explain to her that she wasn't, she did not get a stop work order because she didn't have a permit. Right, that wasn't the reason why it was issued.
It was in the violation of those three.
It was a violation of what the meaning of temporary signs.
Yeah, okay, number two, what are the approximate, we're using your naked eye. I didn't expect you to climb up there on the wall. So using your naked eye, what are the dimensions of the three signs to the best?
On the, on the front of the building, you have two signs. There's two, there's two banners on the front of the building.
What are the sizes?
On, on one side of the building, there's two signs. The one just above the, the canopy or the, the lower one is approximately probably like one foot by 10 feet maybe. And I'm saying approximately, I'm just eyeballing this, one foot by 10 maybe, one foot by eight.
And the other one?
The one up higher on Wall Street is about approximately four by eight, I'm gonna say.
And then the large one in the back of the building?
Approximately 15 by 25 or 30 feet long.
So that's important to know the size of, estimate of it. Do all three signs say, quote, 323 Wall Street Music Hall, end of quote?
Yes.
Okay, and last question, has the Freedom of Information Law request from the Ms. Polidoro for the previous four years, quote, temporary sign permit applications, end quote, been met?
It's correct. There was only one that we came across. This was prior to my position here at the city. I'm gonna assume that it was issued, could have been issued in error because if you look, we only had one temporary sign permit going back four years. We don't usually issue permits for temporary signs. But at the same time, temporary signs must come in to compliance with what temporary signs outline in our code.
Right, okay. Now, those were my questions. At this point, yeah, hold on one minute, Brian. So those, that's kinda since the fact pattern that we can jump off of and ask our questions of Eric, Ms. Polidoro, Mr. Logan. And then we're gonna give you an opportunity to ask questions, Ms. Polidoro, Mr. Logan. Okay. You heard, both of you heard the answers to them, to my questions?
Yes, we, we heard and Mr. Kitchen has some pretty good eyeballing. We do have exact dimensions prepared that we can provide if you need them. On there.
Gave close?
Yeah, it was, some of them were pretty, pretty good. Um, but we do.
I'll take your numbers if you'd like to give them to me.
Sure, it's.
15 by 30 is what in your numbers, 15?
Here, I'm just, I'm just gonna read them for you. 13 by four and a half, that's the one on the second floor on the Wall Street facade.
Okay.
14 by one, which is on the canopy.
Right.
And then the third larger one is bigger. It's 48 by 18.
It's pretty big.
It is pretty big. And that one does require an area variance. If, should it become permanent? We are seeking for it to become permanent.
Okay, we'll go, let's, let's deal with this issue first. And like I said, I'm glad to hear, we're look, we're talking permanency. Okay, board, I open up to the board, questions for Mr. Kitchen, Ms. Polidoro, or Mr. Logan at this point? Brian?
Eric?
Yes.
So, um, I've got a number of questions.
Okay.
So Eric, what about these signs don't conform to the temporary sign code?
All right, so when I look at temporary signs, I look at a size, purpose, and duration.
Correct.
Okay. The signs, you know, do exceed temporary signs, do have a certain one single temporary sign not exceeding thirty-two feet in, 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 in any area which announces.
Square feet.
Square feet, yeah, which now.
That's a four by eight sheet of plywood, correct?
Right, which announces an anticipated occupancy of a site or building or identifies the contractors, architects, engineers, et cetera, on a building under construction shall be permitted until a building is completed and a certificate of occupancy is issued. So when I look at size, these do not meet size requirements. Two, I look at purpose. Mr. Logan has stated several places around Kingston, for example, the YMCA, lawyers' offices, VFWs, which are announcing a special event. They're celebrating so many years. They're announcing some summer event they're having or an upcoming event that they're having. This sign does not have that purpose. It just says Music Hall, Wall Street Music Hall. It doesn't give a date or a time of any kind of special announcement, which it says according to the code.
Well, it gives the address to three twenty-three.
Right, three twenty-three Wall Street. Next thing, look at his duration. The reason he signed did not exceed a period of thirty days. And I guess now they're up more, almost close to.
Or, or at the close of the construction. The one doesn't, number two doesn't have a number of days. It has when destruction ends.
Number three, temporary signs with a cardboard, paper, canvas, or similar impairment materials may not be placed on the exterior of a building, except that banners for special announcements, like I said before, such as grand openings for businesses with a limit of thirty days for placement on the exterior of any building may be placed on the exterior of the building. I can agree that the banner that was put up there is not cardboard, paper, canvas, or it's more of a permanent nature.
Is that true?
It's vinyl.
It's vinyl. It's, it's a replacement for canvas. It's totally not permanent. It's a temporary material.
Okay, let's, let's not get hung up on the.
I'm just saying.
I know, I understand.
And let me say what I want to say, Tony, okay? So it's, it's.
I just didn't want to break it that, break down.
It's not a permanent material.
Okay. All right. The question on number three is not so much the vinyl, et cetera. It's the announcement, special announcement. The three photos that we have, two supplied by Ms. Paladaro and the other supplied by Mr. Kitchen. I, I would like to ask Ms. Paladaro, and I don't want to interfere with your questioning, Brian, but I think you'd want this answer too. What is the special announcement?
Right.
Three twenty-three Wall Street Music Hall.
So this was, this was their grand opening event. The signs went up for their grand opening event on May eleventh. So, you know, it's actually, your code is a little bit outdated. Constant, under the constitution, this is a content specific regulation because you're saying that you could have a sign that says grand opening, but you can't have a sign that says Wall Street Music Hall, and actually, that's prohibited.
Okay, well, let's get back to three twenty-three.
Right, so I'm just saying that this is not.
What appears that it's advertising the business and not a grand opening.
Correct.
Giving that perception. If it said, hey, we're having a grand opening on such and such a night, come, you know, be there six o'clock, that would be a special announcement.
To the new owner of the building by putting up a new sign with a new name that people would notice. So it did serve that purpose of.
But does it serve that purpose right now as we speak?
Well, you know, Mr. Gartenstein, I'm sure will advise you that this, you, the content of a sign is actually impermissible for you to consider. And I would, I would just like to address.
But that's our, that's our zoning code language.
Zoning code is improper, and I'm sure I can cite him with the cases. But going back to what Mr. Kitchen was saying earlier, his interpretation of the code, the way we read it is that L two only applies to those signs that you put up when a building's under construction. So, you know, construction by XYZ Corp or.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that personally.
Is a different type of sign with a different purpose. And so the size limit in two, we read as not applying to three. We read three.
Yeah, there's no square footage for number three. Most critical piece of number three is that it's for special announcement. It must be dated and it might, it can be of an impermanent material. Those are the three criteria. The size, the size doesn't apply to number three. There are no dimensions. Purpose does apply, special announcement, duration, thirty days. Those are the things that count in number three.
So at the time that this notice or stop work order was issued, the signs had only been up for a few days, we believe. Because again, the stop order is undated. So that's not an issue. And as I said, they, they were for a special event on May eleventh.
And the. Back to my questions?
Yeah, but we had a question regarding that, that had to be answered, so go ahead, Brian.
Okay. So content aside, these signs, they, they're made out of temporary material. But they in no, they in no way speak to a specific event or anything like that. They're, they're signs that you would have gotten a permit for or attempted to get a permit for, I would, I would assume, to be permanent. And it's, it's, it's kind, from, from, from my perspective, the signs, you know, at this point, they may be up for longer than thirty days. But, but the, but the signs are, the signs don't in any way announce a grand opening. Doesn't say grand opening. It doesn't have a date on it. There, there, it, it basically says what the building is, what the function of the building is. And, and that, and that's fine. But the, but the problem, the problem is, is that they really should be permanent signs with, with permits having been sought to put them up. And that's really, you know, and, and I, I might, I might stipulate that what, whatever was it, whatever was, you know, vague about, we could certainly clarify. But, you know, I, I just, I honestly don't see the signs as being temporary signs as defined by our code currently.
Exactly. This is the point that you don't feel that it meets the criteria in either one, two, or three. Maybe some aspects of those signs meet the criteria, but doesn't meet the criteria totally.
Can I ask a good question, Mr. Chairman?
Of who? You're going to ask it of?
I just wanted to ask Mrs. Paladaro if she has a date on the banners, which the code stipulates.
No, as far as I know, there's no date on the banners and that, you know, that is an oversight. But they are an impermanent material, vinyl. So, so, you know, we read it as saying you can't have temporary signs such as cardboard, paper, canvas, but you can if it's for a special announcement. And this was as part of a branding campaign. You know, everyone has known this place for, as BSP for years and years and years and years. And now there was a new tenant and they wanted to, you know, draw some attention and, you know, tell people, what is that? Look it up on their phones. That's how people do things now. And, you know, find out about this event. So, but, but again, whether or not you agree that this is a temporary sign, the notice of the stop work order on its face is deficient. I actually had to call Eric Kitchen and say, what is this for? What is this about? What is the issue? And apparently, I still even misunderstood because we thought the city was requiring a permit for temporary signs when Mr. Kitchen is explaining, no permit is needed.
I explained to you on the phone, I did explain, I said, this is not about a permit.
I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Logan, but that's what he was saying about permits. That's not really consideration.
So again, we didn't even have the right understanding or there wasn't a meeting of the minds on why this was issued. We thought, we thought the city was saying a permit was needed for this.
Can I say something?
No, let me, if I could, just a minute. I want to bring this hopefully to some kind of conclusion. Would you argue the point with me that the thirty day period that these, these zoning code criteria in number one and number three has thirty days and the other is moot because it's not for construction? But would you grant me that thirty days is up since these signs have been put up? That's a critical piece.
So by filing.
And, excuse me, that is a critical criteria in number one and three with a limit of thirty days. Thirty days is up.
Correct. At the time these, by the time these orders were issued, it had only been a few days. And you're looking at a point in time. You're looking at whether the stop work order was properly issued in April, when it was issued. And there's no question that those signs were not up for thirty days at that point.
They've been up now for thirty days.
I know, so I'll address that. The, the second part of my answer is that by filing this appeal to the zoning board of appeals, it stops the clock. It stays the proceeding. And so the, the time stops running while you guys are reviewing this. That's under.
Was on the agenda for last month and she pulled herself off the agenda. So the stay order just keeps going, I guess.
I'm here tonight. I needed a few more days to prepare. That was, I mean, we had, that was just days.
In fairness, she had, in fairness, in fairness to Ms. Paladaro, she had a foil request that hadn't been met at that point. And I wasn't going to have a, a meeting and a hearing and everything else, an appeal, without you getting compliance on your.
Okay, so can I ask a question now?
Yes, you can, Brian.
Okay, so all right, we, we have some temporary signs that are up there. They've been up there for a while now. You know, can we just, can we just, you know, move on with, you know, stipulating that the signs come down in, in some reasonable amount of time? And that if they want to put up permanent signs, that they seek a permit to do so?
If that's agreeable to Ms. Ms. Paladaro, it is. To me, it is. I don't know if it's agreeable to Ms. Paladaro.
The city made some statements to the local newspaper.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
There were some statements made in an article in the paper. And so, you know, we, it's important to us that this notice of violation be revoked for public, for public reasons, you know, we had community organizations that were part of that event that started, that got very upset about some of the things that were being said or the supposed lack of diligence and all of these other issues. And so, you know, we're asking you to revoke the stop work order. We do understand that the signs have a thirty day limit. And as I said, we would have submitted applications today, but we're waiting on some signatures. We will be back before your board next month for two area variances for the signs, at which point you can grant or deny them.
Area variance for the sign?
Yeah, for the size of the signs.
For permanent ones, right?
For permanent, yeah.
Yeah, to, to make them permanent or permanent, right, to keep them up for the time being.
You mean, want the, the signs that are up now?
Yes.
You want to make permanent?
We want to leave them up for more than thirty days at this point because, you know, they're up. They like the way they look and they'd like to leave them up until they come up with a more permanent sign solution.
Well, can I say something?
Have you spoken to the planning board? Because this is a historic.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Let's not get ahead of ourselves with planning board and everything else. I got enough dealing with zoning board. Who wanted to speak?
Me, Mary.
Mary.
Eric, do you remember or do you have documented the date that you put that notice up?
April twenty-ninth.
Okay, and they had been up.
Yeah, yeah, one second. Hey, hold on.
My understanding was April twenty-ninth.
April. Have to check that date, Tony.
What can you?
Yeah, I'd have to just go on my email quick. I have a date right on my, right on my, right in my.
Date I saw was April twenty-ninth.
Eric, did you make Ms. Palladino aware of that date when you spoke on the phone?
Well, she had called me up. She didn't ask me what date the sign went up. She just assumed that it was because of a lack of a permit, but it had nothing to do with a permit. It had to do with the signs being at a concordance with the zoning law.
Okay.
I would, I would like to get more back to Brian's thinking. And I think what he is, is saying is, has some real legitimacy that we consider an extension, this is agreeable to the board as part of the motion to extend the time period of these signs remaining on the building, the three of them, with the stipulation that they must be removed by, I'll throw a date out, July tenth, a month, two thousand twenty-one. And that the process for the permanent sign application needs to start one week hence by June seventeenth. That shows good faith effort that you're going to put up permanent signs. Shows good faith effort on the zoning boards part that we extend this to these signs till July tenth, two thousand twenty-one. That gives you a month to get the process going of permanent signs and the application. And Eric will review with you privately what's necessary, the planning board, et cetera. But I think Brian opened the, opened the can up and I'm going to open it up even more and pull it out and.
Well, I'm going to try to push it back in.
You, you, you want.
Because the signs don't meet the criteria.
Well, we're not making, we're not making them permanent, Mary. We're keeping, giving them.
I understand that, but even for a temporary sign, they don't meet the criteria. It's a sign advertising that this is three twenty-three Wall Street Music House.
Which was, which was originally BSP, a totally different business that now they wanted to clarify was a new venue, a new owner, same address.
Mary, it, it. The compliance issue, Mary, I think, has to do with, with the code's language about what, you know, that the signs announce a grand opening, they have a date, they, you know, some.
Right, and that they don't meet the criteria. In my mind, when I'm reading the code, okay, to me, it has to have a date and it has to be like a grand opening, advertising something, not a business, not a branding.
Not any, not anymore because it appears as if.
There are other signs with.
The content issue is, is something that will have to be updated. And, you know, and I'll, and, and that very well may, that very well may be true. You know, the things, things have changed. So, you know, you perhaps maybe don't have to say grand opening to announce that something has changed.
It says special announcement. It's open to interpretation what special announcement is. It could be a birthday, it could be a.
I think the thing here is to avoid, is to avoid being punitive. I don't agree, by the way. I'm not going to agree to revoke the citation.
No, I'm not, Brian.
But I am trying to find this, I am trying to find a solution, you know, to, to the problem. And, and I, I, I'm apologetic towards the, towards, you know, the folks that if there was any bad press, unfortunately, we can't control the press. And, and, and so that's, that's, that's unfortunate. But what we're trying to do now is just trying to come up with a reasonable solution so that you can, you can.
I agree. What do you, what do you feel about the solution that I proposed? That they remain up until July tenth and they have to start the process of a permanent sign application and procedures within the week? What do you feel about that?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, at this point, they've been up for, they've already been up for a while. And, and we're, and now we're talking about extending it yet, yet another month, which is fine. And I understand there's a stay and that, you know, that the citation went out. Do we even know how long the signs were up before the citation went out?
That's what I was trying to figure out with my question to Eric.
Not very long because what Eric told me was that the complaints started rolling in right around that April twenty-ninth. And that's why the stop work order, which. And that's why the stop work order, which I have, I, you know, I might get in trouble with this, but I've got a problem with a stop work order going out on a zoning code infraction. I, I've been doing this ten years and I've never seen a work order, work order notice go out. I've always seen letters written with, um, order to remedy. I don't know why and I don't really need to know why a, a stop work order went out. But anyway, let's get back to trying to.
Tony, excuse me, can I jump in for one second? Um, and I've been listening to the entire hearing, uh, pretty much, um, have a handle on where four of you stand, I haven't heard Donna say anything, is Donna still on?
I'm still here.
Okay, Donna, can you just, um, address the issues that have been raised just so that I can get a, uh, idea of where your thinking is at this point?
Well, um, as far as the signs are concerned, I do agree that it doesn't, uh, state that there is a special event happening and it's just an address sign. And they're supposed to be temporary and they are not in line with the, uh, zoning code as it currently stands. Whether or not it's, uh, correct, you know, or legal or illegal, that's our zoning code at the point. Um, I do agree, there's no date on it and, uh, you know, the timing of it for being there, you know, for me personally, I think they should probably just, uh, find a solution for them to, uh, have the signs, but, uh, not keep those signs as permanent. You know, those are temporary signs and, um, they should be temporary. Uh, and when they come down, permanent sign should go up, not that vinyl.
Do you agree with my proposal to extend?
Yes.
Signs until July tenth as long as.
Well, Tony, if I could just, just, if you just hold on one second.
Well, I need to, you asked Donna's opinion was, so I'm asking her what her opinion was on my proposal.
Yes, I agree, that's, that's a solution that, uh.
Yeah, but, but I think corporate counsel.
Okay, all right, we will let him speak, but I needed to hear Donna's opinion.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Cause your suggestion may be moot at this point because, um, my assumption is that, um, at the conclusion of this hearing, Ms. Palladaro was gonna want to, um, you know, have the opportunity to submit whatever summation she wants. We're gonna have to adjourn this hearing, um, for a decision to be, uh, drafted and voted upon. The stay automatically continues until you vote on that decision. So as a practical matter, um, you know, the same thing happens. Um, you know, uh, we're gonna come back either two weeks or four weeks from now to reach a final determination, the stay is in effect until then. My assumption is that in the interim, Ms. Palladaro is gonna be filing the, um, uh, requests for the permanent signs. Um, deliberations with regard to those permanent signs are gonna be conducted by a number of boards, as Mr. Kitchen started pointing out. It's in a historic district, so the HLPC is gonna be involved. If they're gonna be asking for a variance, there are other, um, um, applications and other issues that are gonna have to be addressed. And your decision, um, certainly can't be made this evening because a written, um, you know, summation of your reasoning, um, you know, can't be produced on the spot. So as a practical matter, it's getting stayed anyway.
Can I, with all due respect, can I hear aspects of what you said about the process starting, application starting and all that? Can I hear that from Ms. Palladaro, please?
Yes, I, I thought we said that already, we have applications to the HLPC. The H, we need the planning board and the zoning board of appeals prepared. Um, we're just waiting on signatures, we're hoping to get them in before today's meeting, um, but it didn't happen. But, but I also want to point out that, you know, regardless of how you feel about the signs, and I, I know there are strong opinions on both sides, we're only asking you to look in, on that stop work order on its face. You know, you're, we're asking you to say and agree that it was deficient. I mean, we spent half the meeting today trying to understand what part of the code these signs were violating because it's not clear on the face of that stop work order. Was it L two, was it L three, you know, of subsection thirty-six? It, it, it wasn't clear. And so your first job is to decide whether that stop work order should be upheld or whether it was insufficient. And again, no respect to Mr. Kitchen, this is just, you know, a matter of course. And then.
I didn't, I didn't sign that order, man.
Right, you, I couldn't even tell who signed it. But second, um, we know we're going in for those other applications and we're aware of that. So, you know, we, we appreciate the extension that you would give on the temporary signs, understanding that these have now been up for more than thirty days. But we, we do ask that you address our appeal, which is whether or not the stop work order is sufficient.
Okay, I just want to make something clear for the record, I did not sign it and I did not paste it on the building.
Okay.
Okay, not me.
That's, that's good to know, Eric. Um, um, Ms., how do you pronounce your name, it's driving me.
Palladaro.
Palladar, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said it wrong.
I don't, I don't want to get it wrong, so.
I would have issued you a stop, uh, an order to remedy. You would have gone.
So.
And we wouldn't have been here.
We, I, 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 I hear your point personally, I hear your point and, and, um, you know, I agree, we'll, we'll, we'll take that up. Um, it, you know, as, as, as something that we'll, we'll address. Um, I just have an, one other question and that is, is what you, what you anticipate the timeframe might be for, um, getting your permits and getting permanent signs, um, you know, actually fabricated in, uh.
So the, the Wall Street Music Hall is a pop-up. And so it's not intended to be a permanent tenant. And so now that they've had their pop-up event, they're hoping to keep the, the signs up um, until, um, either another tenant is identified or until they decide, you know, to remain permanently and, and come up with other signs. So they are proposing to make the current signs permanent. Whether that's approved or not is gonna be up to the various boards and that's not an issue.
That's what I'm asking, uh, you're, you're putting permits in, correct? Uh, request for permits in, but I'm asking you is what, um, you know, what do you anticipate the timeframe for that to be?
So.
She wouldn't have.
We know that. Four different boards need to look at these signs before they can be granted. So I am looking at a minimum of four months before there's any kind of approval of these signs. And if the zoning board denies the variance, I don't know who's gonna be first when we submit zoning board.
Now, when you say approval of these signs, you're not talking about the actual physical signs, you're talking about what's written on these signs? Will be put on permanent signs?
No, uh, my office, at the request of the client, my office has prepared applications to make the current signs permanent.
Permanent.
Current, actual signs.
The design of.
Of vinyl.
No, the signs that are up, I think she means are gonna be the permanent.
Permanent signs.
Hearing now.
Yes, so for, yes, the, the signs that are up now, there'll, there'll be applications, but again, these applications are not the subject of this, you'll have the chance to weigh in on them next month. Um, but yes.
Brian, to answer your question, if the applications, if all the applications are filed in a timely manner, the, um, HLPC and the HAC will likely take up the, um, issue on the first Thursday of July. The planning board meeting, um, I believe is the, um, third Monday in July. And then the fourth application is in front of this board, so that would be the same meeting that we would have to, um, readdress and conclude, um, the hearing on this matter. So, um, while I certainly appreciate the, um, overestimation of time, um, I don't anticipate that it's gonna be anywhere close to four months. Uh, there are times, yeah.
But.
Now, Ms. Palladaro, I just want to clarify one thing because it's very unclear, talk about unclear. Are you, I, it's just so I understand this, are you going, are you going to be asking for a permit to keep the actual signs that are there, the material, that is on that building as a permanent sign?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, I, 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 I don't know how you do that.
Well, that's, that's up, that's up to her, Brian.
Whatever.
Um, the matter before us is a far different matter and quite frankly, I'm confused.
I am, too.
I'm confused as to what our motion is gonna be. Evidently, the motion will be, uh, to reconvene this matter at our next board meeting. Uh, after Ms. Palladaro has time to submit her final and concluding, um, statements. Is that correct?
Yes, we'll, we'll put together a written package with our final statement.
Okay.
Is there a timeline for that?
Yeah, next month, meeting.
Thank you, I, I meant a time in which you won our statement, so we'll get it to you a week in advance at least.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, we have a motion. I don't even know if it's.
Well, we're tabling it.
Tabling it, I guess.
Well, Dan said we're tabling it for what, two weeks, Dan?
No, till the next meeting.
Meeting. I thought he said two weeks and then another meeting with us.
You don't have a meeting in two weeks.
I understand that, I, that I misunderstood what Dan said.
I think he said two weeks to prepare a written statement.
And to prepare it and turn it in.
If you let me speak, I will clarify what I am saying instead of everyone speculating about it. I am asking Ms. Palladaro how many days from today she needs to submit a summation. The work on preparing the decision, okay, cannot start until we have received first summation. So I'm asking how long that's gonna take, can that be submitted within ten days?
Ten days, um.
From today?
Yes, we can do it within ten days.
Okay, so if we get the summation within ten days, we then have twenty days from the submission, okay, to prepare the, this, to, um, deliberate with counsel and give me instructions with regard to preparing the decision, which presumably would be available by the July meeting of the ZBA. So pending the issuance of that decision, the, um, stop work order with regard to the sign continues to be stayed. In the interim, Ms. Palladaro is gonna be filing, um, the applications for the permanent signs, which will be addressed by the, um, four separate boards. And presumably, they're all gonna link up with the decision date on this appeal. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just, I just need the motion, is this a motion to table the matter until next meeting?
I move.
The, yes, and, you know, with the understanding that Ms. Palladaro has ten days to submit a written summation.
Can, can we just get the date so there's no question? We will be submitting it at, by the end of the day on, was it June twenty-first? Is that, today's the tenth, so that's. On June twenty-first.
Motion to table.
Yeah, and obviously, if, you know, if you need a little more time, just let me know and that's not an issue.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Um, all right, so. Ms. Palladaro will submit the summation by June twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay, board, I need a motion to table this matter until the next meeting and Ms. Palladaro will submit a summation by June twenty-first.
I move.
Brian, Mary, is that you?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
A opposed. Okay, Dan, thank you for your, uh, bringing some conclusion to this, okay?
Tony?
Yes, Brian?
Can I make a request that corporate counsel and the board members, um, hang on here after we, we conclude the meeting, I, I just, I, I need some clarification.
Do you know how to do that, Eric? That makes sure it's only the.
So I would have to, uh, yes, I will have to, um, exit, Mrs. Palladaro and Mr. Logan, uh, out of the meeting.
And nobody reminded me on the first one.
So you let me know when you want me to do that.
No, remember, you were supposed to remind me whether there was any public input, I didn't hear.
You did, you did ask.
No, on this matter, on this matter.
Nobody else here.
Well, I don't know that. The screen.
Oh, I'm looking at the screen with everybody who's on and there's nobody else.
I'm talking about there could be somebody from the public on here and I don't know, and I'm hoping.
There's somebody from the public on here, um.
You were supposed to remind me of.
It's better, Donna.
All right, thank you, Eric. Can you get it?
For your time, we'll, we'll leave you.
It's always, it's always a pleasure, Ms. Palladaro, right?
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Thanks both of you.
Hi.
It's always lively.
Can, can I say something?